...growth in the past few years and to keep up with that growth and our economic prosperity, we need to manage that growth and watch how we give permits and continue to guide the direction the city is headed with our new neighbors and certainly the influx of our snowbird friends that we all are concerned with safety issues and roads. So those are key priorities that I would look into. So our community, our churches, our business, we need to collaborate with all of them to make our community what it needs to be and has been. It's a good place to live. We need to be good hosts to those who come and visit with us and enjoy what we find as our home. So this is my priority. And I think government needs to, whether our local government or even our national government, we need to remember our ABCs and put the cross stick together that we need to be accountable to the people, certainly our locals. We need to be sure what we do as a city benefits our locals to be. And definitely collaborating with all venues in our community, whether churches, businesses, community, and our volunteer groups. It's a great place to be and let's enjoy it and continue to spread the good news and share what we have here in South Alabama. Ms. Quays.
Good evening. I'm Erade Quays. I was born and raised here in the heart of Foley, Alabama. I am proudly married to Anderson Quays III and together we share a blended family of eight with a golden legacy of great grandkids and great grandkids. My early education began at Aaronville School and continued to Foley High School. I later attended Golden State Community College where I studied nursing before transitioning into business. My career path has been diverse and fulfilled. Over the four decades of experience in healthcare, manufacturing, and real estate and in corporate, I began my professional journey with five years at Foley Nursing Home as a certified CNA and at South Baldwin Hospital as a certified CNA. I then spent nineteen years at Patrute Center for that where I advanced from an assembly line production supervisor to a production supervisor. I later went on to be HR supervisor. I managed to serve six years as HR assistant at Miami State followed by seven years at Spectrum Resorts. I currently work as a front desk receptionist at Collins Aerospace in Foley, a role that I held for eight years. I have had the, and in addition to my professional career, I have had the honor to serve on the city council for sixteen years. I am the second minority woman to hold this position. I have earned three CMO certification through the Alabama League and the municipalities. I am committed to serving not just in my district but all four corners of the city of Foley. I have always, I've served on various boards and committees focusing on development, infrastructure, parks, education, and community safety. I work on projects focusing on upgrading our drainage system, upgrading our parks, and smart developments and road expansion. I've always done this with one goal in mind and that is improving the quality of life of our residents. I'll look forward to the next four years as we continue to serve together as we move city of Foley forward.
Ms. Warrenette, Ms. Warrenette, please speak in the microphone.
I'm Don Warrenette. I was born and raised here in Foley, Alabama. I graduated from Foley High School. I've served on several boards in the city. I was chairman of the Foley Housing Board over two decades. I was chairman of the Foley Library Board at the same time. I was also one of trustees at Foley High School. I served as one board member in the Alumni Association, Foley Sports and Corporation, also Parks Board. I was on the Foley Chief Advisory Board when I first graduated from the first police system academy at the earlier Foley. I've done several things for the city. I've done a pair of patriotic services. I'm a veteran as well, a Christian force. And so I look forward to the challenge and if I am elected, I will serve in the best interest of the people. I will have an open door policy for all of the peoples of Foley, not just district two, but everybody in Foley. And at the last election, the city was at twenty thousand people and now it's roughly around twenty-seven thousand and growing. So we're one of a thousand people per year and it's lovely to see that we all thank you for your kind attention.
I'm Tim DeLauer. Good evening. My name is Tim DeLauer. I've been married to my beautiful wife for twenty-four years and we have two children that we're very proud of. Both attended Foley High School and my daughter's currently serving in the US Air Force overseas. My family and I moved here ten years ago, but my roots run a lot deeper in this area. My grandparents moved to Bell Shores in nineteen fifty-five and bought a house on the canal. My grandfather's name was Tom Sawyer. He was a local electrician and owned Tom Sawyer Electric. He actually rewired Souvenir City after Hurricane Island. Back in the day, Bell Shores didn't have a school, so my mom was bused to Foley every day. And after she graduated Foley High School, she enlisted in the US Navy. I was born on the island of Guam and for twenty years I was a Navy grad moving from military, military base across this great country. But I've always looked forward to spending time with my grandparents right here on the Gulf Coast every summer. A decade ago, I sold everything and moved our family to Foley to start a new chapter. Since then, I've built several very successful businesses. My first was on loss inspection, a company where we help home builders accountable or represent buyers. I also own Halftime Office Space where we take in rundown or underutilized buildings and revitalize them. In that town Foley alone, we've transformed two properties. One is a popular restaurant and pizza place now that sat vacant for many years prior and the other is affordable office suites. These projects weren't done as a politician but as a citizen who loves this community. My office is located in downtown Foley across from Goodyear and the doors are always open if you want to come by and visit with me. The reason I'm running is simple. I love this city and I want to make sure it stays special. This is the place where I plan to retire and hope my grandkids will grow up. And I'm a servant in heart. I served on the South Baldwin Chamber, Board of Directors, the Chamber Foundation, and recently chairman of the Board for the Coastal Alabama Business Chamber, helping small businesses succeed and working alongside leaders throughout the community. If elected, my number one priority is going to focus on improving the infrastructure, improving schools, increase transparency at City Hall, and ensure that all the residents of Foley know who I am and that I have an open door policy. Let's make sure we focus on the things that truly improve our quality of life, not just for today, but for generations to come.
All right, Ms. Quays.
I'm Philip Heisenberg, Council of District Four, and thank you for being on the floor tonight. I enjoy living in Foley. I'd like to serve in council to work with the mayor and incoming councils to continue to make this city a great place to live and work. I have over forty years of experience in local and state government. I retired from the Alabama Department of Conservation and Natural Resources, State Land Division Coastal Section, where I worked in coastal management. I worked for Baldwin and Mobile County Governments helping them to protect and improve coastal resources. I also worked for the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs as a community and economic development specialist providing grants and planning for cities and counties in the state. I worked right here in this building, the city of Foley, as community development director responsible for federal and state grants and planning from nineteen eighty-one to nineteen eighty-nine. Also, I've served on the city public planning commission since nineteen two thousand and four. Also was chair for four years and I'm a certified Alabama planning and zoning official. This experience matters and I will work to strengthen planning and zoning and promote smart growth, provide strong efficacy for Foley Public Schools, upgrade infrastructure including roads and drainage, and increase investments in parks and recreation. Married to Lenon Hinesley and we have two girls and thirteen grandkids and we think Foley is a great place to live.
Larry Eagle. I'm Larry Eagle, County Borough Council of District Four. Being born and raised here, I've seen many changes over my lifetime in and around Foley. I was born and lived here at South Baldwin Hospital, now Baldwin Health. I attended Foley Elementary, Foley Middle, and Foley High School. After attending college at the University of Southern Mississippi, I returned to Foley to raise my family. My wife Pam's retired, her and her sister served in the Foley area for many years as well. All five of our children graduated from Foley High School. All six of our grandchildren attended local schools. I've been involved in this community for many years, whether it's at civic clubs like the J.C.'s, Foley Quandals Club, coaching league, or being the president of the PTA. I'm a retired businessman. Being in business in downtown Foley for forty years, that business experience has taught me well. My dad always told me, you know, learn how to deal with people. Learn how to deal with the public. Listen to them. When it's time to talk, sometimes it's time to listen. So that's, that's my experience in Foley as well, as well. So the reason I'm running is obviously I love Foley, always have, and I want to ensure that Foley's a great place to live and raise children for decades to come.
Cheryl Seager.
Good evening. My name is Charlie Ebert and I'd like to thank you all for attending tonight's forum and being an active part of both the Foley's future. It has been an honor to serve as the District Five representative since two thousand and six. My experience in business, community service, and as a councilman makes me the best choice for District Five. I was born and raised here in Foley and yes, the impact of growth does concern me. I graduated from Foley High School and Auburn University. When I returned home, I joined the Ebert Insurance Agency, a family business that was founded in nineteen twenty-eight by my grandfather. I'm married to Amy Morris of Foley and I have one daughter who's expecting some open bill for grandfather soon. My thirty-eight years of business experience exemplifies my leadership and fiscal responsibility. It also gives me an understanding of how governmental decisions can impact the community and the citizens. I'm committed to serving Foley community. My past volunteer service includes president of the Foley Outlets Club, president of the Foley Rotary Club, twelve years of service as a volunteer firefighter, and co-chair for the construction of the Foley Kids Park. That was a community-built park that lasted for over twenty years and survived two hurricanes. So it was a quite a very enjoyable community project. I currently serve on the Baldwin County Public Sector with the Alabama Insurance Underwriting Association and I'm the current vice chairman of the Riviera Utilities Board. I love Foley and I will always work to protect Foley's small town charm. On August twenty-sixth, vote for Charlie Ebert and you will keep experienced leadership that works for you and prioritizes Foley's prosperity and community spirit. Thank you.
Derek Perdue.
Good evening. My name is Derek Perdue. It is an honor to sit here tonight and to listen to them and learn from them. I am new to politics. I have never run for politics, but I thought it was time to get off the bleachers and get into the game and get in my own backyard and start making a difference because it's time people got off of Facebook and quit just talking about politics and it's time to get involved in politics. I am not from Foley, but it is an honor to retire here. I have retired here like a lot of other people and I have added to the growth that we need to address right now. I worked for the United States Postal Service. I have given twenty-five years to United States Postal Service and I have worked with a myriad of people. These people come from different temperaments as you can well probably wonder, and it's a very high-stress job. I'm sure you've heard that. And it has very high standards, but I bring this to the table because I have worked for every narrative individual you could possibly think of, from high stress to low stress, to anger management problems to alcoholism, and they all were close enough as no offense. But I love my job. I couldn't work for a better institution. We are now two hundred and fifty years old this year and the original postmaster was just Benjamin Fryman. I have worked with city planners and I will work with entrepreneurs in this city to keep a vibrant, economic, booming city. At this point with growth and roads that are growing at exponential levels, we're not going to have any problem keeping Foley a robust behind. I will guide it as best as I can from the leadership that I've seen with this great city council we have right now. I will work with fiscal responsibility. I will keep the budget balanced. I will try my best in these unusual times of inflation and unpredictable governmental regulation. I will try to keep utility costs down. I will try to keep taxes down. And first and foremost, I will protect the elderly. A lot of elderly have a tired end to this community and I want to protect their life to stay here and not have housing costs, taxes, prices going up, inflation drive them away from a dream that they've already spent thirty years earning. I want to close with the fact this chamber belongs to the people and where we all will be serving, that chamber belongs to the people. And we've got to make the priority that their voice should always be heard and put first. Thank you.
Mark Neeranis, obviously a common thread among our handlers is they all love Foley. I think we all do and all agree with that. So on that note, continuing on that, and Ms. Quays, we're going to start with you. Our attempt here is to stagger and not start with the same candidate. Each question, so we're going to start with Ms. Quays with this next question. What do you think is going particularly well for this city of Foley that we all love?
Well, um...
Ms. DeLauer.
I think Foley has done a great job here. That's why people want to move here. We're able to manage the growth. We're keeping up with our infrastructure and we have brought in convenience for our citizens. They don't have to travel to Mobile, Pensacola, to go get doctor service, to go shopping. Everything is right here within a few minutes, even right to the beach. So I think we're doing great. We're bringing in places to eat, enjoy. We also built recreation for our citizens to places that they could go and get exercise. So I think the city of Foley and the current administration is doing a great job.
All right, Ms. Warrenette. What do you think's going particularly well for the city of Foley?
Growth for one. That's going pretty good. There's a lot of things that we can do, you know, and we're doing some great things. Of course, infrastructure is one of the major factors in a city of this size. You know, we need to work on that. And there's some other safety issues. Police Department proactive needs to be in place. And just a number of other things that we need to address, you know, but we're doing good as well.
Charlie, what do you think is going particularly well for the city of Foley?
Yes, thank you. I think the city of Foley's doing a great job partnering up with the local chamber. Very small business friendly, great place to raise your family and to grow. We have a lot of great amenities to the city of Foley. And like folks said, there are some, the number one thing I hear from voters is they don't feel the infrastructure is keeping up with that. So we want to keep Foley great and keep roads low and that's going to be one of our top efforts.
All right, Ms. Quays.
Yes, I'm very impressed with the city government from the mayor, council, down to city staff, especially the community development department. That's the one I work most with and I think they've done an outstanding job in providing information to the planning commission so that we're able to make good decisions. Sure, growth is, is, is something that we're, is a challenge, but we're, I think we're doing a good job trying to control that. And we're currently updating the comp, comprehensive plan and updating our sub-rates, subdivision rates. And I think that's a real good spot for the city.
Ms. DeLauer.
I think Foley has had a lot of great things going for. That's obviously the reason everybody wants to move here. We're close to the beach. We've got a lot of amenities, like Philip said. You know, my grandkids love to train people over here. So it's one of those things in Foley that just really attracts people. You know, you've got a lot, you've got all these great places to go to, great restaurants. We do have some challenges as far as the growth. I mean, there's a major challenges and they're being addressed now and I'm advocate for stronger regulations myself and everybody very well knows that. So, but yes, everything for the most part is going really good in Foley.
Ms. DeLauer.
Foley is in the best financial condition it's ever been in. And we're a great place to come and do business. If you want to start a business, love taking a business here. It's a very conditioned environment to do that. A lot of our financial success with the city, I would like to pat myself on the back, but I really can't. The council works together as a team. And Mike Thompson, who's in the audience tonight, is our city administrator, and he has taken a city that used to have no financial rating when we went to borrow money to, we are now a double A financially rated institution. We're at the top five percent of the state of Alabama. And if you're not a financially secure community, you can't do a lot, especially when it comes like supporting public safety. Our public safety is going extremely well. We have a great paid volunteer fire department. Our police department, I joined the council in two thousand and six, crime was a problem to both. And they worked hard and by twenty fifteen, the crime rate is lowered to where it is at a all-time low and has remained very low for a number of years since then. Thank you.
Mr. Perdue.
It is not really hard to say the, oh, sorry. It is not really hard to say the things that have gone well with the city, but I am amazed with the exponential growth that's happening, how well the infrastructure has attacked that growth. And I, going into this campaign, I didn't really know a lot about what's happening in Foley, but I've done a little bit of studying and the, the road situation is being addressed in a way that is staggering. They're adding roads down to twelve in fifty-nine. They've made connections. Collin Street, they've made different connections. They've allotted money for paying the roads. I found out that, how about fifty-nine and ninety-eight are under the Department of Transportation. So there are another barrier to deal with, but Foley has dealt with it. They widened fifty-nine. They've dealt with Foley Beach Express widening it. From what I understand, they have future plans to widen Foley Beach Express and pave it. So I was amazed getting into this, how much this city has done to attack the infrastructure, add to the infrastructure, take the money, use it discreetly and wisely, and attack these road issues. At first I was a little worried, but now I think that this city is heading towards a bright future.
All right, Ms. DeLauer. So we're going to begin next question with Mr. Heinsley in the next table.
You forgot, you forgot those two.
District one.
We're all very fortunate to live in this little city of Foley. We, the city business or whether the standard business, it either you move it forward or you move it backwards. You're moving forward and you can cure a lot of problems if you move it forward. If you start moving backwards, it's extremely difficult to cure problems. And I have seen the cities that move backwards and we're one of about that. I think cities in the state of Alabama is growing. We're growing exponentially. But I know this load, everybody's concerned with growth, we all are, but our permit for residential is down a little over seventy percent. So that tells you that the market takes care of itself. Only other things that's happened is our planning commission, Mary Wisdom and Janet, has tightened up our regulations and guidance where when they do build subdivisions, we're avoiding mistakes from the past. And, you know, it's almost impossible to, to come out with ordinances and regulations that's perfect. You have to constantly tweak them. You may tease nature of carding, maybe. Do you hear, you're treating more than you apparently see.
Yeah, Ms. DeLauer.
Well, a famous video broadcaster said he was, became famous for his followers, the listeners saying ditto when they heard all of the things that were said. And what more could you say? It's ditto. So I'm going to say ditto, however, add to that, the question being what's done well in Foley is I have to fill our merit, speak on the radio once a month. And there's other means of communicating to the citizens of Foley. We do a fairly good job of that, but the biggest, I think, is what the council has done in the past and hopefully will continue to do this throughout the years ahead for a bright future. And that's the stable budget, the financial strength of Foley that's already been mentioned. That we have here in Foley, it makes it a great place to live, raise a family, and enjoy the visitors to come to join it with us, all in a well-managed system. So I'll say ditto.
Okay, we got it, everybody. All right. Okay. All right. Now we're going to start with Mr. Heinsley. And there's, there are going to be several questions pertaining to what I'm about to say, what I'm about to lead into. Foley has been recognized as one of the fastest-growing cities in the state, providing both opportunities and challenges. What do you see as major areas that need an improvement for the city of Foley and how do you think you can help achieve those improvements? And we want to talk first about growth, traffic, and infrastructure. Mr. Heinsley, you'll talk about that and we'll move on to Mr. Ebert and on so and so forth. And I won't bet you anything, I promise. But, but I'm going to address your thoughts on growth, traffic, and infrastructure.
First, that growth is going to happen. You can't stop it. People are going to get up. We just have to plan better and do some smart growth and work with the city staff and the planning commission to, to, to improve our regulations. But also, I think one of the things is on the lines of infrastructure, the drainage in District Four is a major problem because the city can do a lot of stuff, but the majority that surrounds District Four is an unincorporated Baldwin County. So there are some real issues as far as drainage out in District Four that need to be addressed. And that's one of the things I think I pick out. Hopefully, working with the county, because it has to be a joint effort. It can't just be the city to work with the county to improve that. Also, the city's doing a great job of infrastructure as far as traffic. There's, I've seen a lot of stuff going on at this point, roundabouts and turn lanes on Hickory and Michigan. And it's, it's, it's a challenge. Growth is a challenge, but I think we can manage it if we, if we try.
I think we've got some growth, traffic, infrastructure, and possible improvements.
And it's like you said, Foley's the fastest-growing city in, in state Alabama. I'm not wild about that. Honor. We, we do need to slow it down. It is slowing down. And the rapid growth, it affects everything. In fact, it affects the schools, first responders, crime. All the crimes doing, doing well, as Charlie said. It's affecting our rivers and streams. We've seen a lot in the past couple of weeks just on Facebook of the runoff from some of those subdivisions that are being built. We got to be more restrictive on that stuff to, to protect our streams. Wildlife, drainage, like Philip said, and roads. It affects it. It's traffic's, it's crazy. Traffic's a nightmare and it's only getting worse. Right now, we've got three thousand homes that have been approved that have not come up out of the ground. So we've got a plan for that. Be ready for that. And I think we're working for that. We, we need to do, do more. I'm always in favor of trying to do more. So, but yes, that's, that's my opinion on that. So.
All right, Charlie Ebert.
Thank you. Growth, growth can be... Growth, growth can be controlled by the economy like it is right now and the regulations that we see from the planning commission. And I think that's a combination of those two is where we are now with the reduction in the new building permits. They're down about seventy percent. The planning commission is currently reviewing the subdivision regs, making them even stronger. We've already adopted low impact development standards for sustainable growth. We've adopted the impact fees. We revised the subdivision regs. We created streetscape regulations where streets have to remain on the properties. And growth has been managed in that direction and we can always have to continue to change that and update it with the times. There's going to be a living, breathing, and component that will always require to be revised. Our traffic, we added some roads. We've added North Con Street. We did the South Con connection, East Burn. We don't have to keep doing that. And planning the roads, planning the rest of the future growth on those roads like we did on East Burn. We built a two-lane road, but we acquired enough right-of-way for lanes. And the infrastructure, we just got to keep up and maintaining ditches and continue to update our intersections.
All right, Mr. Eber.
I think that growth is good and it should be addressed as well. Growth is good for the economy because it brings a big mix for robust business economy and it does again, it should be managed. I was glad to know that the city has a five-year stretch strategic plan to deal with growth, to allot funds for infrastructure, especially for roads, which I was happy to hear, and to make sure that the roads, corridors, arteries are passable, to have those streets that they're made, to have streets going up and down fifty-nine so they don't have to stay on fifty-nine. Again, the infrastructure is being addressed by this five-year plan and the five-year plan will go out and new members can come in and take that plan forward. So the five-year plan should be looked at. But the one thing I was amazed and happy to see was the money allotted for infrastructure and I think that Foley is going to be okay. I hear a lot of pessimism about Foley, but I have a lot of optimism. I think you've got some good leadership. And the main thing I see is you know, really, I don't know enough about it to really talk about it, but I don't think that they're in red or hurting for money. So I think the infrastructure is going to look good in the future and I think as far as growth, roads, everything, I think we're in good shape.
A good thing, and it's some councils responsibility to keep it kind of both in the middle of the road. You can't if you interfere with it, try to stop it, then you create other problems and unintended consequences. And so I'm about the growth, but not quite so fast. I wish it slowed down, but the market's going to make sure it's going to slow down. As I said, I said we can shut it down on residential permits and I think that's below two billion dollars in revenue for the city that off of the permits that we get. But the infrastructure, just talked a little bit about it. I'm not sure it's done a few years back. Three-year utilities put in about eighteen million dollars in the sewer plant, which gave it about ten years out, is what I understand, that the sewer plant's good at the current projects. So our sewer's good. Three-year has about sixty-two million gallons of water in their towers today and they can pump growth in sixty-two, over sixty-two people a day. They do have a home. I know that they had a little bit of trouble with getting it turned in, getting it put down, but that's been cured. So as far as infrastructure is good and our mayor has been very good at connecting the dots, she told me to stop.
Growth and traffic kind of go together and we would like to see, I believe, a greater coverage of our law enforcement to monitor and be visible even in our inner-city town and part, but certainly on the Beach Express, fifty-nine, we do a good job, but I think there's improvement just about anywhere if you look, just like your family, trying to tweak some things. So the infrastructure that was referred to on the north part of town, the ditch digging and the water retention and sewage handling, I believe, needs to be looked at. There's some parts of the community that's been mentioned to me. So that's something we definitely look into, working with the mayor and the councilman to be sure we're keeping up with that growth in those areas of the city that are most vital to hit that, along with the traffic and safety that would go hand in hand. The project that has been mentioned, five-year strategic growth plan, is a working plan that's going ahead and we also are working with those allotted funds to continue a sidewalk program for the pedestrians walking through our community. So with these factors, there's always a little bit of improvement we can do, but overall certainly a good job.
Mr. Quayle. Mr. Nader, we're recording this. We're going to play it back on Saturday.
I support smart growth. Growth that doesn't put a screen on our infrastructure or overcrowd our schools. You know, we can be smart. It bring new businesses in, create jobs, but we just got to be smart about how we do that. For infrastructure, we have allocated one point five million dollars toward infrastructure and pushing all context forward so that we are able to manage the the growth infrastructure in our city.
Yes, Brian.
Growth isn't that a city like Foley, so we have to deal with the growing things, you know, in infrastructure. And there's some other issues here that we need to deal with, like mental illness, homelessness, and some other things that comes with that growth. And also some issues that I think need to be addressed as well.
Mr. La. Yes, thank you. You know, with the with the growth, I think that we've done a decent job of keeping up with things and assuming the board will set ahead in the future. If if we get interest rates lower than the fall was a lot people were expecting, we're going to Donald Trump said that this country is one of the biggest economies and building booms we've seen in a long time, probably the next three to seven years. We need leadership in places going to be able to tackle that. There's going to be developers showing up on our front doors, left and right, to brace up the Foley, and we just need to make sure we have leaders in place that will negotiate with them, make sure that they're putting their part on what happens to our roads and cities, work with them on potentially not building those properties to their full potential, maybe working on with variances or different things to negotiate so they don't put the full potential on there, and then also not upzoning anything. So something's owned to be, let's say, example, hundred residential houses. We don't upzone it to six hundred apartments. So it's really smart growth and it's also negotiated with you guys to make sure that we get what we need back for our community and our infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. All right, we're going to begin this next topic, this next question. And again, it pertains to growth and traffic and infrastructure and all those things, but specifically crime. And we're going to start with Charlie Eber.
Growth and crime. We've been very fortunate in Foley, like I mentioned earlier about the crime stats where we are. The growth spur that we've seen, we've all seen it, has slowed down a little bit right now. Our police department has been able to maintain a level rate of crime during that enormous growth. That is a monumental passer down on a daily basis and they have done it and they've done it well. They haven't, you don't see them violating people's civil rights. The fire department is keeping up with the accident calls that we've seen and we have a new fire truck, the six, that hit the department here any day now. Fire trucks are extremely expensive, but you know, I'm very, very proud of the fire department with my passion for service, but the accolades really allow the least part during all this growth because they kept the bad element out of Foley and we don't want it here and it doesn't have any place here. And I just don't know what's department anywhere in state of Alabama that could have done a better job under the leadership of Dave Wilson as our public safety director and Thurgood Bullock as the chief of police.
Mr. Eber.
As we all know, with growth, with the city getting as large as Foley is getting, you're going to have higher crime rates with growth, coast crime, and you brought the two growth exponentially together. But like my colleagues have said, Foley has done a fantastic job addressing this issue. One thing that's happening in America is the disrespect for our policemen and uniform. And that's a shame because they're there to protect us. We've got to give them not just the resources they need to protect us, but the respect and the qualifications, the training. I believe, I like it because I go to mobility every day to work and I drive up to Holy Beach Express and I see about thirteen set troopers. So I really got to look at my speedometer, which I'm not good at, but that goodness they're there to protect us. They're going to keep speeding down. They're going to keep people running to the beach, speeding, wrecking, and I've probably seen more accidents on the Holy Beach Express than I have on fifty-nine. And I heard that fifty-nine has them all the time, but I've seen a lot of Holy Beach Express. Back to the point, we've got to protect our men in uniform because they protect us to go hand in hand.
Mr. Quayle.
Crime statistics, if I were to go on the record, is our line chair was all the crime is all shot business. The other thing that we got is the calls, police is the bricks if you have a car accident. So that's not all that. It ain't good. It ain't easy, but serious crime, oh, today, we we do not have. I'm extremely proud of our police department. I think our police department is probably one of the best in state of Alabama. I've both didn't see anybody. They highly organized. They know what they're doing, trained constantly. And that was not the case not many years ago. They proved that. But today, our police force is the same police force as you can ask for. And I kind of congratulate them that they are part of the reason that our little city is successful with our taxes. And so those people who are safe coming to Foley to come, so that is a very important thing of our lifeblood is sales tax. And for folks who don't have heard it, over ninety percent of our sales tax comes from outside of the city. Is our sales tax comes from the tourist companies or?
Well, addressing the crime issues that we do have in Foley and certainly do not want to have rose colored classes, there hasn't been assault. There hasn't been an issue of serious nature in our town. And this is why city council, I would certainly say we need to fully support our first responders, our police force with greater visibility. We have a good atmosphere nationally now. We've had numerous people apprehended illegally entering our country and being a threat. None to us who walk in, are law-abiding citizens anyways. The idea is that how do we respond? And that is that we're informed citizens. And so what's been said is good, but the reality is that we can do better. And therefore, the hiring quotas need to be met. We need to have the visibility to handle that traffic slowdown. The turnouts certainly are helpful, even speed bumps, the the lower type, not the big ones that shake the car all to pieces, would be beneficial, maybe in some spots, as well as the possibility and the accessibility of turnoffs on the highways being a little expanded, whether for bike or other traffic, to pull out of the way of the emergency vehicles, whether on fifty-nine or some side streets as well. But the thing is, do you support our law enforcement? Let it be known, if you're going to do crime, you don't do it in Foley, Alabama.
Okay, Mr. Quayle.
Yes, I think we have a great police department. I want to make sure that all our citizens are safe and that they feel safe in their homes and in the community. I support our police department with anything that they need. I would love to have no crime in our city, but that is wishful thinking. We have also approved our police department to hire ten more officers in our this year's budget. So we've got to put more officers on the staff so they can be utilized and throughout the department as to where they may need it.
Brian. Yeah, we should support the police department. That's one thing you have to have, you know, police protect the citizens and you should support them. And I think they need more training and more officers on the street. Thank you.
Mr. Lauer. So I support law enforcement a hundred percent. I think the Holy Beach Department does an amazing job with any interaction I have with them. I will work with them to make sure that they have all the safety tools that they need. So if there's something that they need to prove that the officers like more safety or our citizens like more safety, I will definitely prove that. We need to continue to work with them. We need to continue to work with federations. We have businesses coming to our city that are money laundering, hiring illegal employees, underpaying wages, and not paying overtime. It's a disadvantage to our local businesses right here that are on the opposite of doing things the right way. So we need to continue to work with our federal partners out there to make sure people know that Foley is not a place that we're going to business like that.
Mr. Heinzler.
I fully support the police department and full funding for the police department. I think they do a great job. I personally feel safe at night. Sometimes I leave my door unlocked and this morning I'm still here. So I appreciate everything they do. And in fact, last week they came in the neighborhood, a a anger avoidant rode his bike down, had left this house on Charlotte, which is in the county, and rode into the wrong side of the road on County Route sixty-five. And a policeman came to my property and talked the boy into going with him back to his house. He did offer him a ride in the police car, so that probably got him down. But it was a good response for in Foley. I don't have a lot of interactions with them. I think I think the world of them and they're doing a great job.
Mr. Eber.
I echo everything that everyone said up here. The police department here is top-notch. Couldn't be better. You know, my interactions with them, just seeing them around, they've all been very respectful. They all lay their eyes on the line to protect us and you you just couldn't ask for that. I mean, honestly, I wouldn't be a police officer because it's a it's a dangerous occupation and I appreciate everything they did for us.
Okay, now one other byproduct, I guess, of of growth is challenges that it places on your educational system. With the openings of schools in areas nearby, obviously the city schools aren't east of shores. Alberta school, our fear pattern has shot us almost exclusively Foley now, almost allows us to kind of focus in on more of those. Let's talk about some of your ideas about how to improve our education system, your public education system here in Foley, Alabama. We're going to we're going to start a little bit different here. Instead of starting back with Mr. Tray, we're going to be fair to you, sir. We'll start with Mr. Sorry, Mr. Hughes, Mary, sorry about that. Sorry, Mary Hughes on education.
Great, great question. The education is a vital part of our community for sure, but I think COVID and the experience of that gave us a realization that institutional teaching is not the only method. Now with online services, a blend of school as well as homeschooling, we have numerous opportunities in our community and I think we should take advantage of them as well as private schools in our area. So the funding is through the schools. There's a lot of also partnership with numerous churches and nonprofits that give to schools and much is wasted, frankly. I was a substitute teacher for many years and have contact with our present schools here in the area. And we need to be, again, honest with ourselves that education is the basics. We don't need to add fringe things We don't need to add fringe things and idealisms that may or may not fit your line of thinking. Uh, we need to certainly support those teachers that are doing well with basics, a rewriting of the curriculum. Let's get the industries in here that our students can graduate, go on to a good, uh, associate colleges in the area and further learn from high school. But we wanna keep these young people there and giving them the opportunity to serve and to learn and be as educated as they can without, uh, personal influences maybe that are nothing to do with education.
But even the statements saying that, now.
Well, the city of Foley is in this, and I was just listening anyways. And, uh, the latest thing that, that we've done, uh, came to the major beach, we're gonna talk about that. Uh, city of Foley gives our locals through three hundred thousand dollars a year for extra for their business stuff that the teachers have asked for. And he embers that money, I, I'd like to brag that it's a big deal, but he embers the money that, uh, basically he put here out there and showed the school board that he, that the city was possible for three hundred dollars a year. The school board matched it and he's paid good money. He scores are, are coming up, uh, he killed their building favor. So right now, uh, we're having, we're also assisting with the co-just and we do several other things for, for the, uh, school system to help them out. Uh, I've heard a lot of people talking about, uh, city school system extremely expensive and difficult to run. Tell me there's a pretty good job, uh, of running that. So we've got to get our kids raised up and part of that is kind of broken down by the, the folks here here again speaking. The city of Foley is disappointing and city of Foley is.
Okay, so we're going to continue on with education and as we move to the next district table, we're going to start on the other side of Mr. Matt.
Thank you. In our schools, I'm a volunteer in Foley Beacher, and we want all the best for our students there. Um, communities like Shores want to use your zone, what they can do with city schools. I was on the postal Alabama leadership lead where we were having our two tours through the schools. And, um, it's just amazing what it's done and brought that community together. I think that, um, we're doing our citizens, our students and our citizens a bit service if we don't at least explore the option and see what that would cost and what it would look like. Um, so if our children are future, then invest in them as far as decision we can.
Mr. Poyet.
I think that, um, one thing would be good, I think, is for the career councils to talk to the kids about careers in law enforcement. At a young age, as a ratio officers or police officers, I think that would be a great thing to have in the city here. You know, get our own kids trained and law enforcement, have a police now in cities, that'd be great.
Ms. Queens.
I'm going to, uh, kind of echo the second thing that Councilman Trey says. It's that, um, thanks to America, we have one day committee that we meet with the principals, uh, once a month. And the, uh, the city has allocated three hundred thousand dollars to, uh, help our local schools. This fund helps with resources that the principal need. The funds are matched by the Ballmer County, um, school system. And our school is a vital part of our city and the test scores has, uh, improved, uh, all for the help that the city has provided.
All right, next, District, District E.
Um, obviously support our schools, school, school here, kids always school here. Our grandkids are going to be going to school here, some are already sorry. So obviously have a very big interest in, in the schools. We, we need to look at school safety as well because that's a big issue now. Uh, look at, uh, a great place for kids to learn and be encouraged to learn. And, and be able to, uh, make a way where they can assess my life, not just if they go to college, but if they want to go to a location or whatever. Just learn all of these things that they want to go into and, and support schools any way we can in, in power that the city has. So, uh, that, that'll always be the case with me.
Mr. Ty.
I support public schools, um, you know, probably public schools and public university. I think I, I like the approach that the mayor has taken and funding the schools, um, and supporting the schools any way we can. I do not believe that we should deform a separate school district for the city of Foley. I think we should stay with Ballmer County school systems.
And now, Mr. Perdita.
I, uh, Alabama does not unfortunately have a good reputation or the best educational system in the contiguous United States. And that is unfortunate because we have resources, we have personnel, we have fantastic teachers. I have great teachers when I was coming up, but for some reason, Alabama is not ranked in the higher echelon of, of, of education in the national average. I believe that everything should be controlled locally. I do not believe in government regulation of any kind. Yes, there are times where government should step in with military force and things like this. But as far as local politics, I believe that the local people should deal with it, set the agenda. And the school system, the curriculum should be controlled locally. Uh, law of education should not have one day curriculum, especially, I don't know much about this woke, how much of this permeate the curriculum. But I will create an ageist protection to keep all of the woke philosophy, agenda, any of that, from trickling down to young minds that don't need to hear certain things at a young age. Uh, the sanctity of the school system should be protected and should be controlled at a local level.
Okay, I'm going to defer for a moment to Mr. Addy. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Charlie, sorry. Mr. I'm for that.
Don't, don't skip on the education question, you know, why she hates her, she's in the office. I, I'm very interested in teachers, uh, secondary math and the virtual school system. So our, our children following down, we have a number of resources available to them now to learn. Didn't exist when we built out like the school. The city's partnership that we mentioned is starting out at two hundred and fifty thousand. And the county rematched that. After that first year, the success was phenomenal. And the mayor came to us and said, we consider it, and we did council authority on that. And we have gotten, uh, incredible volumes of love with that partnership following down the school system. And our testing scores have really taken off in that second year of that program. And our biggest challenge that we've seen are the, uh, English and the second language has been a big problem. And after a lot of this funding, it was helping to address and get those children up and speaking where they can do better on those tests. If you can't speak the language efficiently, how can you pass the test? So, and I do, I like the partnership with the young resources. City school system will be expensive. We don't have a lot of impact revenue that aren't fees that Shores have.
Okay, everyone has addressed education, right? All right, Mr. Addy. We're at the closing remarks point. We have some time. Would you be okay with, instead of ninety seconds, giving them a little extra time in their closing seconds?
Sure.
Okay, three minutes, just as we had to open.
Right.
Okay. We're gonna start with about three minutes instead of ninety seconds. And this closing remarks, anything that you think is finished, say, you can say right here is your opportunity to speak now or forever hold your peace as they say. We're gonna start about your.
I think our little city is doing good and, uh, except for the way over there. The, uh, outlook for the city is really good. Our financial situation is good, has everything, things are, you have to go sideways, you do nothing, uh, just what we can have to manage that through it. And one of the things that, like on our budget that I would like to say that normally didn't, uh, across the vote is, we have not the budget, but it's balanced. About the same token, the council, those are playing their own the trigger that we go to do capital projects, go building projects and, of course, roads and so on and so forth, any kind of capital project, if things start going sideways, we have the ability to, to put a halt on, on each, the big expenditures. The everyday stuff like the salaries and the people we hired, that's not effective by that. So the council does keep their, their own the trigger, some will speak on the budget, but, uh, I think we're all real fortunate to live in our little city and we're real fortunate by everything that we've done.
Okay, again, three minutes on your closing remarks. Mr. Hughes.
Well, I thank y'all for coming here this evening, hearing this and light of the third this evening. I do wanna mention and remind us, you know, each your money. And part of what we do is manage that, it's been done well. We are financially stable. However, there's a heritage part, there's a quality of life, a long, a long prosperity that we need to be concerned with and manage as well. With the permits for building, the numerous apartment complex, south part of town being somewhat overloaded, in my opinion, with the congestion around the, uh, Chickaway area intersection there. But the thing is, we need to be involved, all of us. And I think we have a untapped source of knowledge, of, uh, ingenuity and entrepreneurship with right here in our community, with our churches. Involve them in some of the feedback, our businesses, our volunteer groups that are more than willing at no cost to the city to get involved and make this town a better town and keep the Foley life we all enjoy. And with that, the idea too is that, uh, here it sounds like money will solve our problems. Throw a little bit of money will make Johnny smarter. It's never done that way, it's not that way today. It's the dedication of the teachers and the quality of learning that the parents encourage the child to press forward with. We have numerous needs to bring in new revenue, new industry, higher paid jobs, to manage the growth that we are already experiencing and enjoying, all of us here tonight. I worked as the Board of Registered, a member of that board for Ballmer County, serving the youth people in Ballmer County. And it's a shame that we are not overloaded with spectators here at this forum and also participating in the polls that are cast every opportunity that there's on election. There's four thousand four hundred and five registered votes as a couple weeks ago when I contacted the Secretary of State's office, and less than ten percent, many times, vote in our city elections. So it's we, the people again, that manage this town, just like the nation, like our constitution instructed. And like the famous city's perfect address by Lincoln, we're governing other people by the people for the people. And that involves us on a local level to start getting involved, roll up your sleeve, encourage, we need to address mental health in our town, homelessness that's there. We have numerous churches and good groups that are assisting. Some of that money to spend elsewhere might be channeled into giving incentives for bringing businesses to our community, enhancing the agricultural edge that we have in much of the state right here with the soy, corn, cotton, all of that that we have. So I appreciate your vote for District One and thank you for being here again this evening.
Ms. Queens.
Foley is my home, my heart. I walk these streets, I raise my family here, and I work with many of you to make our city better. I bring experience, commitment, and love for this community. We hold onto our roots for a better future. One where our neighbors thrive, where our children have opportunities, and where we all can feel safe, connected, and proud of our Foley home. And I ask you for your vote as I, as we, uh, go to the polls on August the twenty-sixth. And I look forward to continue to stir it with you as we continue to make Foley better. Thank you.
Poyet.
I, uh, like, thank everyone for attending and show your concern. I'm a patriarch citizen, I hope they have the, uh, mindset. Ask not what your city can do for you, it's what you can do for your city. And again, thank you for your kind attention.
Mr. Lauer. Thank you. All right, a couple, I, I don't even have enough time to answer questions. Um, so if you guys want to join me, I'm doing a meeting greet, um, this Wednesday, August twentieth at the Reddy Apartments. Anybody's welcome to come. It's gonna be at the clubhouse from five, five to seven P M. And I'm doing another one the next evening at Southern Shores from five to seven Thursday, the twenty-first. Also, this Saturday morning, we're doing a cleanup in Dula Hedges Park. We're gonna start at seven forty-five, cleaning for an hour. We supply buckets, we supply crab, we just pop gloves, come out and, um, we wanted to be a community event, so you're welcome to those. Um, tonight, I wanna leave with three words to guide my life and my campaign. Faith, family, and community. Faith teaches me to serve others, to be honest when it's hard, and to steward what we've been blessed with. And that's how we'll lead, transparent budgets, common sense decisions, and a council that answers to you. My family keeps me grounded. My wife and I have been married for twenty-four years. Both of our kids went to Foley High, and our daughters currently serve overseas in the Air Force. Like you, I want a Foley where the kids are safe, has the best schools, and traffic moves, and where opportunities, not just for developers, but for people called Foley home. Our community is why I'm running. I wanna be your voice in City Hall. And I want you to always have, know who your representative is. Trust me, kid, if you see me driving around in my big old Cybertruck, or I'm parked in the office downtown, it's across from Goodyear Tire, come on in, the doors are open, and I'm ready to talk. I'm a small business owner and investor who revitalizes properties, supports local jobs, and backs our police, firefighters, teachers, nurses, and veterans. All fighting for better roads and drainage, stronger schools, and a City Hall that lives through and there's City Council meetings and this is first. If you ever need me, call me directly on my personal cell phone number. It's two five one, four two four, five three nine five. And there's also a direct number for me, you shouldn't sit in most of the chairs out there and act like a guard. On August twenty-sixth, I'm asking for your vote for Foley City Council District Two. So together, that is my faith, center of our family, and committed to community, we can make Foley even better.
Mr. Ty.
Yes, thank you for having me, Ty. Um, I appreciate it, I think it's been very informative. I would encourage everybody to tell your neighbor to get out and vote on August twenty-sixth. I mean, we, we have a really low turnout and I would like to see more turnout with the voters because I think it's very important. And I would be proud to serve on the City Council. When I came here in nineteen eighty-one, I, I started working with the city, it was five thousand people. Now we're close to thirty thousand. So we have some challenges, but we, we also have done some great things. I look at our parks and recreation, I also serve on the Grand Creek Nature Preserve War, and that is just amazing. If you have not been out to Grand Creek Preserve, it, it's worth the trip. It is expanding, it's growing, and all of the other parks, it's a tremendous scale of this in ours and soccer fields. I mean, it's just changed amazingly, and I am so proud of you citizens of Foley and I hope you vote for me, thanks.
Mr. Green.
First of all, I'd like to say that I'm thankful that this municipal election in Foley has had a clean campaign on everybody's part. I want to congratulate all the candidates here. I've seen no bloodslinging, none of the other stuff that goes on in some of the surrounding areas. And it's, and it's refreshing because it's kind of rare these times. So, uh, saying that as well, so, uh, I also want to congratulate and bring up the employees of the city of Foley. We have a huge, great team, they do a fantastic job all through the city. And, and I really appreciate the job they do because sometimes they may feel underappreciated. People thank them enough, but I guarantee you that, right? Um, the main issue in Foley is the road. That's, that's no secret. Everybody I've talked to, what are you gonna do with them, what are you gonna do this and that? Um, I've been on the land commission for, I guess, five years now. And, you know, I'm very outspoken about it. Well, I'll tell you that, Phil, there. So I have my opinions and I let it be known. I have a little, my dad, my dad's outspokenness in me, but, uh, so, but it's nothing personal against. so, but it's nothing personal against anybody that I'm talking to either, whether you're on the council or, or on the county commission. I just have my opinion, and that's, that's the way it is. I've, uh, been an advocate for trying to slow things down. Uh, you say my side, slow the growth. And, and people think I'm saying stop the growth, that's crazy, you can't stop the growth. But we can slow it, and there are ways to do it, and there are things in process that, right now, there is moratorium that's going to help with that. And I'm constantly pushing for more, Ralph will tell you that. So, you know, we need to look at our rivers and creeks. Magli River, Monster River, Wolf Creek, all flow out of Foley, the headwaters are all in Foley. So, we've got a responsibility there to take care of what's going on in those creeks, and same to do, of course. But, you know, it's our job to be good stewards of the land we live on. So, that's very important to me, you know, rolling up here fishing and swimming in these creeks. So, I want to maintain their, their health. Thank y'all for listening to me. Um, I appreciate this forum tonight, and I'm asking for your vote on August twenty-sixth, Tuesday after next. Thank you.
John Eber.
Thank you. I appreciate y'all coming tonight and, and being involved in Foley's future. Uh, I wish we did have more people here, but for those of you that came, thank you very much. You have, you have made this a very enjoyable evening. I'm glad you were here. I just kind of re-outline some things. The public safety, I'm strong for public safety. We are always funded out of the police environment. Our police department, they have a few open positions, those positions are still fully funded. They concentrated on hiring quality police officers. They have not lowered their standards just to fill seat or fill patrol car. And that's, that's the right way to approach it, in my opinion. I don't want to just try to be a higher quota. I like them concentrating on quality officers that serve Foley. Our growth in planning, uh, planning commission is doing a great job right now. We're reviewing all the subdivision regs, and we're going to come out of the temporary moratorium with even better regulations than what we have, and that we've been updating through the years. And between our subdivision regs, our design standards, and zoning, all of that directs growth. You can't stop growth, it should be shaped. You can make it look better, and you can put it in the location of town where it belongs. And that's how we shape a better Foley for a better community. Our parks and recreation, I mean, we talked a little bit about that tonight, like Phillip spoke on it more. The Grand Creek Nature Preserve is a jewel. Acres have been added to that through the years. It's now probably pushing six, seven hundred acres. Hope to add to that in the future. And in the near, in the recent future, it looks like we're going to be able to add another forty acres or some adjoining properties to the east. And our education system, when the mayor embarked on this initiative to help fund education by giving them some additional funding, we just didn't throw money at it. The mayor insisted on measurable results. And he said, if we can't show measurable results, I don't want to do it. And we relayed that to all the principals. And when we saw those results, when they were measured, and we saw the results of focusing on academics and what the teachers in the classroom were telling us they needed, it's making a difference in our schools. And I think it will continue to pay dividends. My office is in downtown Foley. I'm a dedicated community servant, and I thank you for coming. And no appointments needed, stop by my office anytime. Please vote for Charlie Eber, August twenty-sixth.
And Mr. Purdy.
I want to thank everyone for being here as well. It has been an honor to sit at this table with these esteemed individuals, they're doing a great job. Their leadership is impeccable. I, I have a lot of confidence in Foley and where it's headed. Um, Edmund Burke said, the only thing necessary for the triumph of evil is for good men to do nothing. And I would qualify that, good women as well. You got a good woman and a lot of good men doing something to overcome evil in any shape, form, or fashion. And again, I will say Foley's in good shape because of that. I would like to vote, I will do my best to emulate the leadership I've already seen. I want to preserve the existing character of the city, I don't think that's impossible with the growth. I want zoning regulations to align with the community vision. I want the zoning regulations in the future of Foley to be shaped by the people that live here. I don't want committees and planning commissions only shaping their necessary, yes, but I don't want them to be a whole much shaped in the future. Uh, the, the interviews with communities and reaching out and getting advice from the communities. It's the only way to plan the future, the people have got to be involved, not just planning commissions and land development. Uh, people to get together and decide the future, you've got to involve the people. And Foley's done that, they've done interviews, they've, uh, had surveys, and I think that's fantastic. They're involving the people, I want to continue to do that. I will support small businesses, I'm proud of the resources. And to support the local entrepreneurs need, I will make sure that we have counseling, the grants, the small business administration gets involved, Foley's already doing a good job of that. I'll make it, the business is growing, the economy's growing, I don't see any lag in that area. Uh, again, I will engage residents in discussions about development plans, the priorities and the future of Foley. And I want the quality of life and character of Foley to be preserved. A lot of people are thinking that can't happen. I believe it can. I believe Foley's got a glorious future. I believe we're going to have another beautiful epic center, just like Heritage Park. As beautiful as it is, I think we're going to have another one in Foley. And that's the future of Foley, growth, control of growth, like a lot of these individuals have talked about. And I think it's a beautiful future. I think the fountain represents everything, it represents community, because that fountain makes sure we got to go around it, talk, have book studies. I think parks represent community, and I think that Heritage Park represents Foley. And by the time we get through, we're going to have Heritage Parks all over the city. Thank you.
I want to add a couple of points before we close. Can you compare August twenty-sixth, two weeks, July twenty-sixth, two weeks in the past, we are in the city election. We're on a different cycle. Our current office holders are completing the five-year term, Mariano Act, Mary Amber Act, Act of Law, against a different cycle, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so this, this election will be for a four-year term. The new council will take office in, uh, in early November, the first meeting in November, so I guess technically November, we're going to take office. It's sworn in. And will there be more than one polling place for the simulation? Everything will be right here, seven A M. to seven P M. on Tuesday, August twenty-sixth. I'd like to thank everybody, I'd like to thank our candidates, we had perfect attendance tonight, that's great. Thank you all for your participation, I'll thank the Thomas Sins campaign for organizing and hosting this event tonight. Thank you to our timers, Miss Sento, Mrs. Markle, for her sheer work tonight, keeping us on time. And thank you to the audience who let our, our participants speak tonight without interruption, we really appreciate that as well. And Tuesday, August twenty-sixth, get out and vote. Thank you all for coming, this will be re-air on W R H P this Saturday at ten A M. Assuming my, my equipment is on the local control up there, it's still running. So, thank you all for coming, and have a great night.